Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Danza zoning Board of Appeals. I believe this is our sixth or seventh location this year of holding these meetings, so thank you for following along. I would ask that anybody silence their mobile phones or at least put them on vibrate so we are not interrupted. I'll start off by introducing our board members down. To my right is Claude Signetti. We have Becky Kilborn. To my immediate right is Ken Scholes, our clerk. Myself, John Bonner, as the chair. And Jeff Soller to my left. And our two alternates, Ken Javini and Corinne Doherty, all the way down the end there. We do not have microphones, as you can see tonight. I would ask if one called upon the public, if they would like to make comments. You can just stand in your location, remove your mask, and speak. Obviously, speak loud enough so we can hear. I tend to be loud, so I think my voice carries pretty well in this room. But I know sometimes we get some background noise, so if we ask you to say something again or speak up, please just work with us. From our co-administration department, our building inspector, Mr. Richard Maloney, is over to my left. And Kathleen Archibald, our everything personnel in the corner. If I could get a motion to accept the minutes from our November, I'm sorry, our October 19th meeting, I guess.
So will Mr. Chairman.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Wait to cameras.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Folks, the way we work is clerk will read the case. We'll ask you, I guess in this case, stand and present your case to the board. From there, the board will ask questions of you. We will then go out to the audience for public comment. And at that point, I will close public comment and we'll come back to the board for deliberation. So you'll hear our thoughts. Again, it's an open meeting, so you get to hear what we're thinking. And I ask that you don't interrupt us at that point in time. And based on how the board is deliberating, we'll give you your options on how you would like to proceed with your case. And did I miss anything, folks? All right, Mr. Clerk, we're going to start with our first continued case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first case is JHR Development LLC, docket 20-4883, requesting a variance to allow a portion of the property to be used for multifamily residential purposes and a finding to allow the alteration of an existing nonconforming parking setback and landscaping setback to decrease the nonconformity by increasing the parking setback and landscaping buffer over existing conditions in accordance with Table 3, Section 3 of the Danza zoning bylaws at 51 Needham Road. And this is Zone C3.
Thank you. Attorney McCann, you can remove your mask so we can hear.
Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, JHR Development LLC. And we have our full development team here with us tonight. We're putting up some of the boards for you. And we are presenting the development that has been named the apartments at Endicott Crossing. And this is located at 51 Needham Road. It's an approximate four-acre portion of a 24 and 1/2-acre site that has mixed-use development already on that property, most notably the BJ's site. And this section of the property was formerly occupied by Hollywood Hits, that building is about 25,000 square feet, and that is still on the property. We are proposing to remove the Hollywood Hits building and replace that with two residential style buildings, 140 residential apartments consisting of studio apartments, one-bedroom apartments, and two-bedroom apartments. And we did present a full presentation of this application at the last meeting when we met with you on September 28. I understand Mr. Scholes has reviewed the tape and will be able to participate in this hearing. At the end of our lengthy presentation at the last meeting, we were left with some marching orders of things that you wanted to see. And I believe we have accomplished that for you tonight. We did submit to you last week a delineation, full plan delineation of the wetland and the riverfront resource area. And from that, you can very clearly see that we are not within the Conservation Commission jurisdiction. We are quite a ways outside of the riverfront as well as wetland areas. So this application, this project, will not require a filing with the Conservation Commission. We submitted a revision to Sheet 1 of the site plan set that delineated the parking spaces rather than showing them in block form so that you can clearly see the orientation of the parking spaces. And we also submitted to you, as requested, the 21E report that we have that gave you the test kit locations as well as the summary findings of that Phase 2 21E study that has been done, both the Phase 1 as well as the Phase 2. So you were provided with all of that information in hard copy last week. And then after that filing, we were finally able to meet for a TRC meeting, Technical Review Committee meeting, with planning staff. We had representatives from the planning department, fire department, building department, engineering, electric, all involved in a remote TRC meeting. And you do hopefully have a memo. I received a copy of it today, of the comments from the Technical Review Committee meeting. And our takeaway from that meeting was that there are engineering design issues that would come up normally during site plan review, which comes after this, when we get into a detailed study of the technical aspects of the project that we will need to address. They were identified as they typically are in the TRC meeting. This was not anything unusual. We talked about stormwater management. We talked about electrical capacity, water capacity, sewer capacity. And those are all engineering things that our project engineer, we're just with the town engineer during site plan approval, to address and make sure that everything is engineered properly to meet the requirements. One note that came out of this that I think is important from my standpoint as projects going forward, because it affects the general layout and it affects the general site, was the comment from Captain Brooks from the fire department who said he was very happy in those terms that were used during that meeting, with the access to the site and the circulation in and around the site. So that affects how we lay things out more than anything else, really. He was happy with that. So you do have the memo from, and I'm glad to see that, from the planning staff reflecting that meeting. So we've done a lot of things since our last meeting, and hopefully we've addressed your comments. We have boards of all the different things that we have submitted to you, and our development team is here. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Just a reminder to turn it over to the board. Board members, you all were in receipt of the memo from the town. I'm sure everybody had a chance to read it. Everybody? Yes, okay. Now, let me start down there with you. Welcome.
Couple of issues. The contaminant. Last meeting we had, we imagined it would be encapsulated. Does somebody check on that, like an EPA person, or how does that work?
Right. And Massachusetts, a licensed site professional, LSP, you've probably heard that term before, is really responsible for doing investigations as well as monitoring going forward how construction is done. We haven't had our LSP with us here tonight to answer any questions that you might have. Ryan Hoffman is here. And we do have a plan. Maybe you can pull that up. That based on the Phase 1 and the Phase 2 that were done on the site, we have identified very clearly for you the area that has some remaining contamination. And we placed it on this plan so that you can see that area. It is extremely small. It is the area of a few parking spaces right here in this quarter of the building. It happens to be under where we plan to put the dumpsters. So that's a good thing. It's not in an area where we would be doing any digging. And in fact, that would be an area where we might have some fill to level out the site. So that's the area that we're talking about that was identified as a result of the Phase 2, and it is a very small area. Ryan is here this evening, if you'd like him here for me. He'd be happy to help.
Well, again, you've got to encapsulate it, right? Okay. Who checks on the encapsulator? Is there someone from the state?
I'm going to ask Ryan. Where are you?
It works for you now. Who doesn't work for you to check in?
Ryan?
So Ryan Hoffman, GDI consultants. As Nancy said, so I'm a licensed site professional or LSP. So I am actually certified by the state. And while I would be working for the developer, I do have a certification of license that's issued by the state, so I do answer to the state of Massachusetts. And as Nancy identified, the contamination is quite limited. We're in the process of finalizing our Phase 2 study right now. And that contamination is isolated to that southeast corner. And we did a number of test warnings and photo sampling across the site, and we're able to demonstrate that it's in that very limited area, not in other parts of the property.
Does someone from the state check your work?
Yeah, so there would be reports that we submit that are subject to review and audit.
But no one comes out and actually looks at things?
Certainly not, no. But that's standard.
How do you take your word for it, more or less?
Well, again, so I have a license that had been issued by the Department of Massachusetts. So, you know, I'm held by a standard, both a set of technical regulations and then also ethical regulations, two separate sets of regulations.
Okay. The reason I ask this is this contaminated site you started. Many years ago, it was going to be a 40B project, and it was going to be single-family houses. And I was on board at the time. And they assured us that we were going to encapsulate all the contaminants, et cetera, et cetera. And they were ready to go. And as it turned out, anyway, the original applicant sold it, oh, we're going to sell it. The new people came in, and they found twice as many contaminants as the first applicant. And if the first applicant had proceeded with it, he probably would have got single-family houses on 5,000-acre blocks in that area. You know, so that's why I'm a little skeptical, because we were told one thing many years ago, that the place was going to be cleaned, and they were going to put everything in a container, encapsulate it, and so forth and so on. Now, I realize that this is not the tannery land.
Right.
You know, I expected to be some spillage. So you're confident that you got it all, and you're going to take care of it? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, as part of our study, which is not actually shown on that map, but, you know, that portion of the site is riddled with test warnings that we advanced with the drill rig. And it's sort of all up and down, you know, from the north down to the south, with testing of a number of different contaminants.
Now, how do you encapsulate it? Put it in cement? What do you do?
So, you know, it'll either be a combination of pavement or fill, you know, imported clean fill and soil.
And how big will that be?
So we haven't actually, so that'll come later when we're, you know, build a little bit more of a detailed design, so we haven't actually determined.
Because they're putting out so that people are going to be caught there all the time. Okay, thank you.
We're not digging it out. And we're moving.
I got you, but the stuff comes, you're talking arsenic here, right?
We're going to be covering it to even out the fill, and then it would be pavement in part and fill in part. But I mentioned that because I know the project that you were talking about for overall the tannery site, that was going to be dug up, dealt with, and put back in. And it's a different kind of stuff. This, we're talking about leaving it in place where it has been for many years, and simply having, it happens to be located in a perfect area to do that. And then what is typically used as encapsulation for sites is pavement, and is often parking area. That's a method of encapsulation, and that's basically what we're talking about.
It's going to be a dumpster area, a flooding bucket.
Yeah.
Okay. My next issue, affordable housing. Okay, you want to put in 10% of 14 units. That just leaves us, you know, floating in the water without a paddle left. You know, we're at 10%, and we're not gaining anything as far as the town is concerned. So I'd like to see more than that 10%.
I would say that the town is in fact gaining 14 units. This is a variance project.
You're putting in those other people, so 14 units, 10% is 10%.
Right.
You're just breaking even.
This is a variance project, so it does not require affordable units under the bylaw. However, we are offering 10% of the affordable units.
And I'm not required to vote for this either.
Absolutely. That's why we're here. That's why we're putting in 10%.
It goes both ways here.
Do you have a, are you thinking of something, or are you looking for more than 10%?
I'm looking for more than 10%, obviously. Also, I just got this memorandum, and can I look through it? And I see the electric department had a few issues, and the water and sewer, where are we going to get the water? But I noticed that nothing here from the schools. Nobody mentions how this is going to impact the schools.
The school is not typically, I have never seen them, part of the TRC. The demand on the school is not a basis for denying a project, even a residential project.
That's nice to ask.
However, this is a situation where we have studios, so we're not going to have children in studio units. One-bedroom, so we're not going to have students in the one, or children in the one-bedroom units. We might possibly have some kids in the two-bedroom units, and we've got 42 bedroom units out of that. Hillary, do you have an idea of how many would have kids?
Thank you, but it's less than half.
Very, very few kids will be in this development, because it really is geared for empty nesters or young professionals with the studio and the one-bedroom. So the impact on the schools is going to be very, very small.
Could be single moms.
Could be. Could be. And I would suggest to you, the affordable units that we're talking about will probably have kids if they are the two-bedroom, not the studio and not the one. But the limited number of units, say 14 units of affordable is what we put on the table. And there might be three or, you know, three or four units out of that would be two-bedroom, because we sprinkle them out, the studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom. So we might have three or four units that might have kids. In my experience, when you're dealing with condos, market rate at two bedrooms, you very rarely have kids.
And that's exactly not the ideal location to bring up kids, anyway.
That's right.
Hey, no, I'm asking.
Right.
I don't have any questions.
No additional. Thank you, Claude. Becky.
Snow removal. Can you give us an idea of what your thoughts were on that?
Larry, you want to show where your snow removal is going to be? Snow storage.
Come on over to the boardroom.
This is, and we'll show you what's anticipated, but against snow storage is a specific requirement under Section 4, Site Plan Approval. So we'll have to actually designate the snow storage area.
Okay.
And the
I just didn't see anything on it.
The planning board has, under Site Plan Approval, actually requirements for how high the snow can be piled before we have to physically take it off the site.
Okay. All right.
So with that intro, we haven't designed it.
It's empty.
But what you would do on a site like this, let's envision this as our apartment building, where it's really sitting in the center of the site. So, and one of the benefits
Why don't you use this plan that actually shows the building?
It's right underneath that layer.
Thank you.
So the obvious location is around the perimeter. And to the extent that we need to perhaps expand on the pavement area, we would stockpile on those areas. And then when it reaches a point where it's interfering with parking spaces or travel, that's when it gets removed from the site. And it's like any other site around here. It's the typical way of managing snow removal on sites that are mostly building in pavement.
We're also outside of the jurisdiction, as I mentioned before, of the Conservation Commission. So I would envision we might be pushing snow in that direction off of those parking spaces.
Over in the sides, yeah.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah.
Which we couldn't do if we were in Conservation jurisdiction, but we're not.
Okay.
So we'd be able to do that there.
So just to amplify the distances, we prepared a plan to show the outer repair zone, which is 100 feet, or 200 feet from the river. And then I think at the closest point, at this corner of the site, it's, if I recall correctly, it's another 211 feet. So at best, we're over 400 feet away from the river at the closest point.
Well, it's like last winter, we didn't have any snow, so.
Those people.
Okay, so on the memo, thank you for sending the information that we requested, by the way. Thank you. I know that there are some electrical issues on Endicott Street already, I think, with enough power. Was there, just kind of, we only have a paragraph here.
Yeah.
Can you expand them?
Yes.
What their thoughts were on that?
Yes, I can. So the site now has 5 KB, is what they call it, on the site now, which may be absolutely fine. There is 23 KB off the site, but within the vicinity that could be accessed for this development if needed. The question as to how much power is going to be needed is going to come down to how is it heated? Is it all electric heat, or are we going to use gas? Are we going to have electric washer and dryer? Or are we going to have gas powered? Or electric stoves versus propane or gas stoves? So once we get into the appliances that are selected and how it's going to be heated, we'll then be able to know whether the 5 KB that's on the site now is going to be fine. And there was certainly that discussion, that that may be suitable. I think the memo even says that. Or we may have to bring in power off of this 23 KB that's located off-site. And again, is that a prohibitive thing? No, that's an engineering thing, whether we have to draw in this expense to that, that the developer would have to incur
It's a long way, yeah.
If that were the case. But that's where they come into, well, where's the gas line? Stephen King, the town engineer, was at the meeting, and he said, well, yes, there's a gas line out in Endicott Street, of course. And there may, it may come into the site. He's going to pull those records for us to determine whether there is that sort of utility. Again, this is site plan stuff where I get into designing. But that was the discussion. The 5 KB that's there may be perfectly fine, depending on what appliances and heating and things like that are used. Or there is available, might be a cost to bring it in, but it's available if that isn't sufficient, and if we decide to go with electric heat or something like that.
Okay, all right. My comment on the water, I mean, I would love to be able to water my lawn, so it's frustrating that they continue to say there isn't enough capacity. And I know that's not your issue, but how are they going to deal with that at some point? It has to be dealt with.
There is water available to this site. The question that was talked about during the technical review was a question of whether the domestic flow and the fire flow, the two different types, and pressures that we need, whether those are sufficient on the site right now, or do we need to do a booster pump? If we do the flow test and the flow isn't sufficient, the answer is you don't do the project. The answer is you put in a booster. And so, again, that's a technical design type of thing. It doesn't mean the project can't be done from a utility standpoint. It's just what do you have to do?
Yeah, my point is that
I understand what you're talking about, is general
That we have water ban the whole summer. We have no water, and we're talking about adding this number of units. So that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Ken?
Thank you. My only question was also the water. I mean, I don't really care if they have enough flow or they have to put in a booster pump. I'm talking about capacity.
Right. And there was no discussion, and it was not brought up that you can't do this project because we, the town doesn't have water.
I mean, maybe we have to go, yes, citizens, to the planning board meeting and voice our opinion there.
Any other questions?
No other questions from me.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Attorney McCann, I have two really basic questions. I'm not fond of use variances to begin with. But my two basic questions are, number one, the threshold to declare a variance, I feel, is pretty high. And you're asking for a use variance here. And the implication is this lot would never be good for any other kind of commercial development going forward. And to me, that is a very high bar to prove, and I am unconvinced that there's a hardship. My second question to you is, if this project were to go through as a residential development, we have rules in the zoning bylaw to control things like density and height of residential buildings and setbacks of residential buildings. And we've seen in the past applicants bring us residential projects that are going to go on an industrial or a commercial piece of land, and were presented with maps that show us how these buildings conform to an industrial or a commercial zoning district. But that's not what you're asking for. You're asking for a residential building. And so that's my question. How can you justify creating a de facto residential zone completely free of residential dimensional requirements, particularly density? If this was built in a residential zone, you'd need your 7,500 square feet per unit. And you clearly don't have enough land for 140 units there.
Right. Well, that's, again, part of the variance process is looking at the site as a whole. And this is a site that I think meets the requirements for a use variance. We have a very irregularly shaped lot. We have a mixed use here going on, but a site that is, this is at the very end, where it has very little visibility. It has no visibility from the access point. And to bring in a use for, that fits in a commercial zone here, doesn't work, or it would have been developed for that. This has been vacant now for almost five years because we don't have the ability to attract a commercial 3-type of tenant here because of the irregular shape that affects the access, that affects the visibility. And this is a use, my application, I think, went into quite a detailed argument about the hardship applying to this particular parcel and the irregular shape, but also the fact that this is actually creating a greater definition of what a shopping center is, and it does fit in with the other uses that are here. Hardship is not the only aspect of granting a variance. There's whether it fits with the zoning district, whether it is in keeping with the intent and purpose of the zoning district. And we think that this certainly, this certainly does. With regard to the dimensional requirements, while we are in the C3 zoning district, and those are the dimensional elements that those are the dimensional elements that apply, once the use variance is granted, we have nothing else to look at but in the C3 zoning district other than those dimensions, and we do meet those requirements. And where else would we look? We certainly meet the setback requirements, I think, probably in most residential districts anyway with the setbacks that are in the C3 zoning district. So we're working with the zoning bylaw as it applies to this site, but we are asking for a variance as it relates to the use.
Can I add something to that?
I'm sorry, I'm Michael Wang, I'm an architect. I just want to add that in the development of the architecture, we did also pay close attention to the character-based zoning districts that were recently established in town. So we are, you know, taking into account all those aspects from materiality, the breaking down of scale and size. So even though those don't necessarily apply to this zone, we have taken those into consideration. And I think, just to underline one other thing that you said, Nancy, this is a really challenging site for commercial use because it just has no frontage on Endicott, and there's no sightlines from the major quarter there. So it is actually a really challenging commercial site. And what you're typically seeing these days in projects like Market Street and Linfield, where you have residential uses at the back of a site in a mixed-use contest, and that's exactly what's happening. If you've been to the Market Street in Linfield, you have the residential piece at the back of the site. And there's a synergy between the commercial uses and the residential uses, and they work off each other very successfully.
I have another question. Thank you, Joe. Ken.
Can you refresh my memory on this stormwater runoff plan?
So I can tell you what I know about the site. This is a good overview. But we have the Crane River here, and I've worked on other sites in the area. I know this was a gravel pit at one point. And all of the soils along that river are highly permeable deposits of sand and gravel. And even if you look at this site, you can see where the ground surface has been scarred and it's sandy soil. So this is a site that currently exists that has absolutely no stormwater management. You know, it was developed at a point in time when those issues didn't exist and people didn't pay attention to it. So what we need to do is make this situation better. And the way you do that is you decrease the rate of runoff, you decrease the volume of runoff. And ideally, when you have sandy soils like this, you have a good ability to infiltrate stormwater into the ground. It serves a number of benefits in that putting the stormwater into the ground slows it down, it supplies the wetlands with water eventually during drought conditions because it takes a long time to get there. And what we envision when we get in, if we get into the design of this site, would be to have the stormwater managed underground and infiltrated. The way we're doing it these days is we put storm scepter units in front of the infiltration so we can reduce the total suspended solids going into the ground. We use deep-sunk catch basins, hooded sumps on all the catch bases to skim off the oil. There's an operation and maintenance plan that cleans the contaminants out of those traps. And so the recharge of the groundwater is pretty high quality. And what we will have to do is collaborate with the LSP on, to start the call.
Starting the call.
Too much work handled, too. So we're going to have to give some thought as to where is the best place to infiltrate that groundwater, respective of what's downstream on the adjacent site that has contamination. Don't know what the solution is there, but there's probably a half a dozen. And providing separations are for the start. Does that answer the question?
Well, yes, but what happens if the river is high?
Yeah.
How's that going to go into the soil if everything's hot? Is it going to push back? Do you have any plans on that?
Yeah, and we've worked on a number of sites. The thing to keep in mind, and if I can try to explain it, it'll become fairly intuitively obvious to you. But the flow of groundwater through soil is much slower than groundwater, than surface water. So when you're measuring the flow of runoff from a site, you measure it in terms of cubic feet per second. The stormwater that we put into the ground on this site may take a month to get to the river. And that's a two-way street. So if we recharge the groundwater on our site, you're not going to see a surge on the river because it's going to be slowly dampened by that soil medium that's conducting that water slowly. Likewise, if the river surges, storm event, floods, a coastal surge, whatever causes that, it's a wrong way to our site. It's over, at the closest point, we're 400 feet away from the river. And while I haven't run the numbers, I'm pretty confident that any surge in the river would have no effect of elevating the groundwater on our site.
I just wondered, if the ground was saturated, how does that water go in to the ground?
Well, any system like this, designing in accordance with the Stormwater Management Act, you have to have a four-foot separation. So wherever the groundwater is on the site, let's say the groundwater is at grade right here, then the bottom of our leaching facilities has to be four feet above that. And there's enough empirical data out there that says that if you have that four-foot separation, it provides adequate filtration and it provides an adequate buffer so that the mound, if there is a mound created by the infiltration of water, doesn't rise up to the level of the infiltrator. So these are, I could go on for a couple of hours on this because I find it pretty interesting. But those are all great questions that we expect the planning board to ask. And if we get to variance, then we'll get into that design. And actually, the town engineer asked questions, and so it's an issue we have to address. I'm trying to give you some broad brushes to that, but the specifics, I don't know at this point.
Anything else?
Is there going to be any elevators or anything for empty messes to get up to the top of this, if we improve such a big building?
Did you say elevators?
Yeah, elevators. Each of the buildings has elevators or something.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all I get. Thanks, you guys. Sure.
I just have a few questions. And I think my question should be directed to the environmental specialist. The site next door that we've been discussing is actually a superfund site. Are you aware of that?
Yes.
Have you contacted any representative? Because according to the information on their website, the cleanup is expected to start sometime in 2020. So has the work commenced?
No, as far as we know, it hasn't. Yeah, we reviewed documents associated with that site. And at this point, EPA has issued what's known as a Record of Decision. But the particular phase that the project is in, they completed an assessment phase, but they have not yet started the cleanup phase.
Well, according to their website, and again, I don't know if the pandemic helped them up, it was supposed to begin sometime in 2020, and it was supposed to take at least three years to clean up the site. And one of the recommendations or one of the institutional controls that they see in place is the fact that the zoning in this area is commercial, which means that it prevents the land from being used as a residential site. So while I understand that the site that's the most contaminated above you, because that's 55 Clinton Street or Ave. And, I'm sorry, did you say Ave?
Clinton Ave.
Clinton Ave, 55 Clinton Ave. So I don't know how we can give a use variance when it's a superfund site that they haven't even begun to clean up yet.
Yeah, well, so the project is not on the superfund site, as you said, it's adjacent. There's a sliver, which was on that figure, a very thin sliver, where our project isn't, you know, even, the impact is very minor. So we are actually, like we said, going to be encapsulating or covering that. And so we'll be eliminating any kind of direct contact. And so it shouldn't be an issue. It's very common in Massachusetts to have sites that have contamination that has been capped or otherwise encapsulated and to have a residential use, you know, a multifamily residential use. So that's a pretty common use. It's how a lot of brownfields are redeveloped in the state. So it's a fairly typical application.
Well, I'd like to ask the building inspector a question. Have you, has the town members been provided with notice? Have they started cleanup? And who would be responsible from the town for, I guess, managing the cleanup?
Either the Board of Health or Engineering. Right now, they're working on the other side of the river on property owned by the same, that was owned by the same company.
Okay.
So they're working at 33 Water Street, it's a condo project where...
That's an active site right now.
And they're working right up against the Back Bay area, they're cleaning up currently. So I don't know if that's what they meant, that they were starting this year, but that was all part of the same.
Yeah, I mean, I read the whole report, so it was fairly long. There were, I want to say, two, there's two different sides of the river. So there's, as you said, there's Water Street, then there's Cheever, and then across the way, there's 27 Clinton Ave, and then 55. So when you're saying three years, is it your understanding that it's three years to clean up the both sides? Or is it three years for each section?
Oh, I didn't say three years. You said three days.
No, no, no. Well, and that's what they said, that's what they said in the report.
All I know is that they're cleaning up on the Water Street property currently.
Okay.
In progress.
Okay.
I don't know what their timeframe is, that may be, I'm not, I'm not part of that. Probably the Board of Health is notified, and maybe each other's side of the area.
Okay. I just don't know how you would have construction for a residential project while they're doing a superfund cleanup like 100 feet away. It just doesn't seem like it would go. But I'm all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom? Attorney McKeon, looking through the minutes from last time, three out of five of our members brought up the fact that this was too big. So what was done to address downsizing it? Because from what I can see, you haven't downsized it at all.
We have not. What we did was we looked at the fit of this site and the fit of what's being proposed. And I think I'd like Michael to address that because we did talk about it. And I'd like him to discuss that with you.
I mean, I think the number of units is actually less than you might typically find on a similar site location. I mean, this project that I shared with you earlier, the Market Street in Linfield, that's 180 units.
Yeah, and thank you, by the way, for that. Let me refine what I'm saying.
Sure.
I particularly had an issue with the height of the building. So...
Right. I actually was going to just kind of get to that. That's where these examples actually are really helpful because if you can, let me just bring it down here to get a little closer. If you look at a typical sort of Avalon, four-story project that you might find in a place like Newton, or this, again, the Market Street project in Linfield, you'll notice that there are four stories, but then they have a full roof structure on the front of it. And in these cases, it's a gabled roof.
Is that mechanical above? Is that why?
You can have mechanical there, but you often, you know, they can be anywhere. They can be on-site, they can be on rooftop, they can be on a flat roof, or anything. So it's not necessary for the roof for that reason. It's more sort of architectural aesthetic. But I guess my point is that I know that they have a nine-foot clear floor ceiling in these units, so each floor is at least 10 and a half, 11 feet. So this typical, you know, building would be, but to the peak of the roof is more like 62 feet, and that's not uncommon. And what we've done with our design, by having a mansard aesthetic at the top floor, we've actually allowed this to stay completely at that floor-level appearance. So it's 42 feet to the top. So it's almost 20 feet lower than if you had the roof on top of the four floors of the building.
So it's also 20 feet taller than what's there?
Well, I mean, it's a very different use from the...
Yeah. So, okay, so that, you explained the height, so what about downsizing the amount of this?
You know, we're trying to take an opportunity here, and this can go to some of the other comments that were made by a couple of the other board members. This is not a virgin site, right? This is a site that has been vacant and in pretty nasty condition for quite a while. And it is entirely paved with no stormwater management. And we looked at this, having been vacant now for a while and different uses, have looked at this and determined that because of the access, because of the visibility or lack of visibility, it really just isn't suited for uses that are otherwise permitted in a commercialized C3 zone, particularly when you consider the market now and the economy now and what people are looking for. And those things evolve. And this is not a virgin site. This is a site where we see an opportunity to bring a residential use that is going to fit well with the other uses on this site. This is a 24 and a half acre site that has retail, offices, medical offices, childcare, gas station, boat brokerage. It's got a whole bunch of different things going on here. And what can we put there that's going to tie it all together? And that is the residential component, which is now becoming a general component of a shopping center. And this area is zoned for a shopping center. So this is an opportunity to bring that use here. However, it has to work. It has to work from a design standpoint, which Michael has already talked about. It has to work from a layout standpoint, which Larry has talked about and which we discussed with the technical review committee. And it has to work from an economic standpoint, or the project doesn't go forward. And what we're proposing here is 140 units that work on this site, and it meets the setbacks and it meets the height in the zoning district. And it will look right here, and it will fit well here. And we're realizing a 1,200 or so vehicle trip reduction over what this was when it was a movie theater. And that's significant here, to be able to accomplish all that and to get a development that meets the needs of the town by bringing residential here and bringing some affordable units here, where you've got services, you've got employment opportunities, you've got the MBTA bus line right there, you've got the commuter routes right there. And the project works, but it has to work not only from a design standpoint, it has to work from an economic standpoint. And if we were to take off 20 units, it doesn't work economically. But if we were to do that, you wouldn't see the difference. It wouldn't be perceptible to you. And not just you, but generally speaking, you wouldn't notice any difference in traffic if you'd locked off 20 units. You wouldn't notice a particular difference in the building if you did that. And it wouldn't work. The project wouldn't go forward. So we're bringing you a project that works for this site, that improves an existing eyesore. And this is a really visible piece of property, that you've got a really ugly building here... And this is a really visible piece of property that you've got a really ugly building here when you're traveling up and down, up and down one twenty-eighth. And as a, as, this could be developed into a site and it's a nice outdoor areas. We are reducing the impervious surface by twenty percent. That's a huge reduction in impervious by adding green space and creating a good use here that, that works, and as I said, that works with the existing uses that are already on the site.
Yeah, I was just gonna add that, you know, a typical Avalon project that you might find along one twenty-eight is usually more in the three hundred to four hundred unit category. And clearly, that would not be appropriate scale wise for this site. But with the one hundred and forty units, you know, we're able to get that large central green space. And it takes, you know, the max impervious for this zone is eight percent. But today, it's ninety-four percent. And with that sort of nice green space, we're able to provide seventy-four impervious. So it's a total market improvement.
Okay. I just had a question on the site plan. I noticed there's two blocks on there that are called amenity. Can you just expand on that? One of those. Kind of like they're, yeah, in the corners between the one bedroom and studio.
Yeah. Right. Yes, those are for the use of the residents and, you know,
Like storage or something?
Off the lobby space, it's more, more likely something like a, a fitness use or some kind of a
So general use for the entire building?
Yeah, and Amazon, drop room, those kinds of things.
Okay, before I go off to the audience, any additional questions from the board? Yep, Bob.
Are you gonna have any employees working there or do you have an office or anything like that?
There, there will be an office there, whether it's, it's something, the management company is set up there, you know, a few days a week or a few hours, you know, especially early on, on block sixteen. But it'll, the management company will be offsite if I'm heard.
No, no building superintendent living there or an apartment there?
No.
So if I'm, I have an apartment there and I have, say, a plumbing problem?
You make a phone call and somebody will
Somebody will come and take care of it?
Oh, yes.
All right, so there's gonna be an emergency call and that kind of thing. Where, when you mentioned it's snow, it, wow, Dean and Road. Is it town or is that private or what?
Private. It's private.
So you guys would have to pay someone to do it, aren't you?
Yes.
Yes. Private, they're getting contract fees, like
Could you identify yourself, our minutes, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Hillary Rocket.
Jay Jarville.
These are apartments you want.
All right, I have another question.
Thank you, Bob.
This is Jim, he's been here to be in boys.
Can I name again one more time?
Hillary Rocket, Jay Jarville.
Becky?
Um, just signage, can we just go over signage one more time?
Yes.
We didn't talk about it tonight, and I think it's
Yeah.
Michael's got, he's got a graphic for us outside. Oh, you like? A lot of boards.
All right. This one?
Oh, thank you. So this was just a quick pass, because we brought this up to my, um, this is a graphic showing the existing Hollywood Hits sign today, which is roughly thirty-four feet from the ground to the top of the sign. And the actual sign board is roughly nineteen of that thirty-four feet. So it's, it's on two or three columns today that are fifteen feet high. So the sign sits fifteen feet above grade. And it's over forty feet long. So the sign area, double-sided, each side is over eight hundred, eight hundred square feet. And so I think what you're proposing, Hillary, is that we might reduce the size of that by down to twenty-five percent of, of the existing sign today, so that it would now be just two hundred square feet as opposed to the eight hundred square feet and remain in that location. So that's, that's sort of a graphic of what that might look like.
So that, is, is the Marine Company and everybody on that same sign? Or does that is the There's just one sign for the Hollywood? I, I can't remember when I dropped in there.
Yeah, there's another sign behind the, the Marine Company that has the BJ's and all those other
Okay, so they're all on a different sign and this is
A different site, apartment site, yeah.
So
That's a
So twenty-five percent of what's there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Glad you got on, go ahead.
This is for the building inspector. How long has that building been abandoned? Two years?
Hasn't been abandoned. It's been vacant for probably four.
Four. Isn't that sign now an abandoned sign after two years? The building inspector? Because we've, we've had cases like that before, where a sign wasn't used for two years, and that wasn't used for two years, it's no honor a sign.
We use it.
Well, we use it.
Yeah, it, it has never been abandoned.
Oh, wait a minute. Hollywood Hits has been closed for four years and it's been advertising a, a business that's been closed?
It's a non-conforming sign as defined under the bylaw. And the bylaw does not talk about the two-year provision as related, as it relates to signs. This sign has been used for that property. It is, it's never been abandoned for use. It's in fact specifically not been abandoned.
I'm gonna take issue with you because we had a sign on Route One. And it was, it was a gas station on Route One, had one of the big, big, big signs. And the gas station had been closed for at least five years and the sign was not used for five years. And we declared it, at that time, the board declared it no longer a sign. And it went to court. And the zoning board won the issue. So I, I would like to know from the town council, get an opinion on that sign because there, there is a case and we want to
Hey, Bob, any other additional questions?
No, no, none.
Is there also a sign at the street?
I didn't hear about you.
Right.
Yes.
And you would be on that sign too? I know that
I was sure.
Yeah, I mean, I remember you did not Yes, yeah.
Basically, it's placed on Hollywood.
And this, this is the sign that you're talking about, and it's currently being used right now for a real estate sign.
Yeah, right.
Well, at least for the, for the theater. I mean, the, the business that that advertises is no honoring business.
Correct.
It has been closed for over two years. Therefore, the sign, as far as I can say, is abandoned.
Well, hey.
We can get a ruling.
Well, we can get a ruling on that if you want.
It certainly hasn't been abandoned, but I hear your question.
Okay, additional questions from the board or the, I'm gonna go off to the audience. If you have a comment, I would ask you to raise your hand, identify yourself and your address, and please speak loudly. Mr. Price.
Bill Bradstreet, Town Meeting Member Precinct One, question about traffic. Does this require a traffic study? Yes or no? If it doesn't, has it been a traffic study of some sort of the traffic that Dean Road would gain by having all the children? Would it be detrimental to the town, the road, the businesses that are located on Dean Road? Traffic.
Okay, I think their position is that this is less traffic, but all
We have the traffic study.
Yeah, there is a traffic study in
Yeah, the full traffic study was done and provided to the Board of Appeals. And as I said at the last meeting, typically, we don't provide the traffic study to the Board of Appeals. We did in this case. It normally is reviewed and will be reviewed at site plan. But there is a significant reduction in trip generation, both weekday as well as weekend.
Additional questions? Yep.
Attorney Maslow?
Yeah, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matthew Doug in Town Meeting Member Precinct One. I have three comments concerning this application. The one is the impact. My colleague, Mr. Bradstreet, just mentioned traffic, but also the impact on our town infrastructure, so water, sewer, electric. And then also, I, I really think there's a potential for impact on our schools or the size of the classes. The second comment is for the affordable housing. So Mr. Zignetti was spot on that ten percent is insufficient. We know today that we're at ten point three percent. And we, and after the 2020 census metrics are tabulated, will likely fall below ten percent, which exposes us to 40B projects. And so ten percent for this project is, is, is too low. It should be twenty. I think twenty percent is, is appropriate. This is a quick pro quo. The applicant is proposing something that benefits them financially, and it's questionable about what it does for the town. So twenty percent, if you're willing to go ahead and move forward this application, I would say that requiring twenty percent in perpetuity is, is an appropriate ask. And then last is the zoning. So earlier this year, Town Meeting approved a character-based zoning district along High Street, which was, many parcels were industrial. And now Town Meeting has approved it to also be residential. And that's really what needs to happen along this Endicott Street corridor, where you have this vast expanses of asphalt parking lots that we know really today are less useful than they have been in the past as these big box stores close down. A lot of the retail spaces aren't utilized like they were in the past with the sixties and seventies mindset. So for, to approve this, it's, I don't want to say it's spot zoning, but it's, you're looking at these projects in isolation individually. And so what you end up with is a hodgepodge. You have another application down the street at the old Denny's site. The Liberty Tree Mall is ripe for development. There's those huge expanses there, you'd probably see applications come in for there. So I really think that the Town Meeting should be the final stop for how this, how this residential, or how this industrial zone property is converted to residential. I don't think it's, I don't say it's outside your purview, but I think in the big picture, the Town Meeting really needs to have a say on how, how this is, how this corridor and ones that are similarly like it are gonna look in the future and not just have these, kind of these, these apartment buildings drop out of the sky and without much thought about how it impacts the overall street state.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions from the audience? Here ain't none. I didn't miss anyone, I hope. We will come back and deliberate on this. Before we do though, Attorney Ken, what about the affordable housing? It's been brought up. Is that something you are willing to move on? I know Mr. Zignetti brought it up, it's brought up by the public. You're at ten percent. Is that something you're willing to look at and adjust?
Yes, we're willing to look at it and adjust.
All right, that said, I will go for deliberate.
I'm not gonna answer the box.
Yeah.
Worried about the sign. So it's the last provision in the sign bylaws, thirty-seventh. So it says if I issue an order on a non-conforming sign to have repaired, that order is ignored in thirty days, they lose the rights of non-conforming signs. It kicks in if I issue an order for repair.
Repair all the
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Great. You good with that, Bob?
Yeah, what did he say?
If he issues an order to have to repair the sign.
The way you people are talking.
If he, if he issues an order to repair the sign, they have thirty days to repair. Otherwise, they lose the right to have it as a sign.
Thank you.
Yeah. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we will deliberate, and we'll start down there with you, Bob.
All right, a couple of issues. I'm still a little shaky with the, the contaminants. The ten percent doesn't go for me. I, I won't go for it with the ten percent affordable housing. And we'll talk about the sign.
Thank you, Bob. Becky?
Just a couple points. I think a commercial use is not likely in this COVID environment. We're seeing retail close, office close, everything closed. I think there's still a demand for residential, so it makes sense to go in that direction. I have concerns, but I think they're concerns that the planning board needs to address. It's really outside of our area. We're just being asked whether or not this project makes sense. And so I would say it's a challenging site. And I understand that it needs enough units to be financially feasible to, and I, I appreciate how it's a mansard roof and not like to the sky. The design is good. It's high, but I, I think you have to get that many units probably to make, there's a lot of work, infrastructure, to get to this site. And I, I recognize it's somewhat similar to the residential commercial district downtown, the way that we're trying to merge the residential and the commercial together, although, I mean, where are they gonna shop BJ's? But I think it, I see that combination that has been looked at. I would appreciate a little bit more affordable housing, but I would be in favor of this.
Thank you, Becky and Ken.
Thank you. I agree with Becky on the use change, especially in today's day and age. I don't really care for that many units, but like we, Nancy said, what are you gonna do, drop twenty? You're not even gonna know the difference anyways. So I, I would be in favor of this.
Thank you.
With also, the affordable housing needs to be more.
Okay, well, we've gotten needs and the applicant has said they're willing to pledge on that. So Attorney Ken, I guess I, to, to put a number on it, could we come up with something? Sats ten? It sounds like Bob will not vote for it if it's at ten. And both other members have asked for more.
Although it's, it's not applicable to this project, we would look at the bylaw and we could do twelve and a half.
Twelve and a half percent. Okay, so they would take that as a condition?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, and Ken, you're a yes. All right, Jeff?
I'm still struggling with the hardship. And I also would not vote for it at ten or even twelve percent. So I'm a no.
Thank you, Jeff. And Bob, let me re-clarify, are you still a no or are you a yes at twelve and a half?
I just wanna make a, a quick comment. That bode yard is fairly, no, that's, what, been there five years, maybe six years?
Five years, yeah, five years.
We approved that.
I know, that's my point. So hello, place isn't ready for commercial or you can't put commercial there? That bode yard's a new, new business that
Five years ago is not today, not with COVID.
Well, could, hopefully.
Hopefully it'll go away.
Before the election, we're gonna get a
And it's, and it has switched to ownership. And it, I'm not going to speculate on how well it's doing.
I'm surprised by this piece of land. Twelve and a half, I can vote for it.
You'll go with the yes on that? Okay. Um, Ken?
Yeah, I think it's much too big. So when we discuss, when you discuss how you came about a hundred and forty units, I thought you saw the site and you saw how many you could pack in there up to, you know, the reasonable height there as far as you can go for an economic, you know, roof wall. But have you done a study on what, what is really economical, economically feasible? Like half, half the units, can you do a study on that? Over time, rent in mortgages would probably be easier. So, so I'm not really buying that. And another thing, you talk about other cities, Linfield and New, kids about them. We, we talked about Dambisa. The thing's gonna be pretty tall, because when you're driving by on the highway and you look up at that twenty, twenty-five foot building, it looks big enough. But if you see that monstrosity, it's gonna be, it's not a big, big plot of land. It's gonna, it's gonna be two big buildings and it's gonna look daunting. I, I just think maximum I would wanna see is two floors. So I guess I would bring it seven units. I, I I would not vote.
You're a no. Thank you. And Corinne.
I agree with Mr. Duggan. I think that this land use change should really be something that Town Meeting changes, and we shouldn't be really doing this wholesale. So, I would be a no, plus the contaminants, I'm just concerned about those. So, I would be a no.
Thank you, Corinne. And I too, and I want to clarify my statement. I don't see the hardship here. I think this really, this is a commercial lot. I've never voted in favor, I think as far as I've been on this board, to support any residential and commercial zones. I think this is a very slippery slope for this board to have to be a seven-member board to decide for the entire town of Danvers that we're going to kind of cherry pick where we would do overlays, in a way. And I do understand, you know, if you look at some of the projects we have done downtown before overlays, there was, you know, a lot of direction from the downtown committee that, you know, they wanted this. They wanted commercial mixed with residential. And we did some of those projects ahead of overlays being passed by Town Meeting. And, you know, we took kind of a leap of faith at that point. And as it turned out, it is what the town wanted, and now it's in the bylaws. Well, I feel that this should be something that goes to Town Meeting. And if they want to start to have Liberty Tree Malls and Denny's and this particular project look like Market Street in Linfield and have residential units and commercial, then let the town members, Town Meeting members vote on it and give this board direction in the way of bylaws. So, with that said, I will not vote for this as it is presented. So, I don't believe you have the votes. What would you like to do?
I think what we would like to do is continue this to your next meeting so that we can take under advisement some of the stuff that we've heard and the comments that we've heard tonight, and perhaps we can address them. And perhaps we can't, but I would hate to see this opportunity lost when you do have this within your jurisdiction to grant these fair.
I understand, and I will say this, Attorney Ken. You know, again, it goes back to my original statement. Three out of five of these members looked for it to be a small project. And it's not smaller in any way. So, I'm not saying that will get it through, but it's, I mean, you're going with a 25-foot building to a 42-foot building up on a hill. It just doesn't fit to me. And I, I think for that reason, you know, size-wise, it's just too large. For me.
Can I just make a comment on the?
Yeah, go ahead, Becky.
Going to the Town Meeting and through all of that. That was, I believe, a two-year process when they redid downtown Maple Street, the industrial area. So, just as a, you know, perspective, that this site could potentially sit vacant, and Denny's across the street potentially sit vacant for another two to three years while they go through the process of rezoning. And I respect your opinion with regard to that. And I think it would make it way easier for us to make a decision.
Absolutely.
However, what they're asking is within our jurisdiction and being able to do it. So, I would just comment that, you know, it's a long process.
Yeah, but again, that's only one of my arguments. The other one is that I don't see a hardship. And I think it's too big. So, those are my three positions, I think.
I will point out that this board has found a hardship related to this particular piece of property eight times. So, there is a hardship related to the topography, the soil conditions, and specifically, in this case, the shape and what that does to the access. This board has found eight times that there was a hardship related to that, to this particular site. And there remains a hardship. Nothing in that regard has changed. So, I think what we would like to do is to continue.
Yeah, our next meeting is November 30th. Now, November 16th is canceled by that attorney. And it is back here at Holton Bridge, somewhere.
I am not at that meeting, by the way.
Hold on, Ken, one second. Are we here, or are we at the high school? So, they can promote, but could I get a motion? You would like to continue to November 30th?
What's your meeting after November 30th?
December 14th.
It's here.
December 14th, is that the high school, as far as I know?
Oh. If we could continue to December 14th, please.
Do you prefer that?
Yes.
Do we have a, do I vote December 14th currently?
What about it?
There's no other cases on.
No, we have no.
All right, can I get a motion to continue just December 14th?
I'll second.
And we've got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll see you December 14th.
Thank you.
We're going to take two minutes before the next case. Fourth appeals meeting, back into session.
We need a gap.
I know. Mr. Clerk, we're going to snap the top right now. And Mr. Clerk, I think it would be our first new case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first regular case is Pet Track, Shakurty. May I give me a mispronounced? Docket number 20-4887, requesting a special permit to build an EFLA in a lot that is undersized. The EFLA will be 711 square feet in accordance with Section 9.3.3.2 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 21 Sherwood Ave. This is owned R2.
All right, thank you. If you could just remove your mask, and tell us who you are and what you'd like to do.
My name is Peter of Pet Track. I've been in Danvers for 15 years, with my parents and above the main room. So, we have decided with my wife, Violet, and my daughter, Alba, and my son-in-law, Tony, to stay, to live here, to be extended family. And for us, we are, we are approved by you, the unit, that we stay in the world. And we're just waiting for this.
Okay.
So, it's going to be exactly the same, the same, the same drawing of the house, but they're going to be on the same floor.
Okay, so same exact footprint that exists. And can you just help me with the pronunciation of my last name?
Shakurty.
Shakurty? Shakurty?
Shakurty.
Okay, I think I have. And so, you're just looking, and it's, it's meets the size. So, Rich, this is here because it's an non-conforming lot, or undersized lot?
Yes, that's the only reason, yeah.
Okay, is that the extent of it? Very good. Corinne, we'll start down there with you.
I just have a couple of questions. When I went to look at your house, it looks as if it's, the construction's already started. Has the construction started on this?
Yes.
So.
I can explain.
Okay, good.
The owner had called me a while ago. And just, we talked about the EFLA. So, you know, we said, yeah, you know, we had this conversation. I didn't know him, he didn't know me. We just had this conversation about the EFLA, how we wow. That's fine. So then, a builder calls me. I never put the two addresses together. He said, hey, I'm going to be doing this addition on 21 Sherwood. So, I talked to the owner separately and the builder separately, and I knew the builder, went through everything I needed. And then I finally get the drawings, and it shows a second kitchen in. And then, he had talked to the owner, and they thought it was by right. So, there was a miscommunication. So, what we did is we made him submit plans without a second kitchen. And I issued the permit to get him rolling, and just said, you know, it still goes up to the zoning board whether you get the in-law or not, because it is a special permit for the undersized lot. So, I did allow him to go forward with drawers that do not show two kitchens.
Okay, Rich, so they did pull permits to do the original work.
It was just kind of a, where I talked to two people separately at different times, and it all came together when everything went out of my desk.
Okay, thanks, thank you. Right, Bob?
Yes, so, I'm just trying to figure out where exactly in the house you're going to have the little unit. So, it looks from the drawings, and I'm not sure if they stay this way, but the top floor is going to have the master bedroom, three bedrooms. And then, is the second, like the, actually, like the first floor, is that where you're going to have the EFLA?
Yes.
Okay. So, where exactly in the floor plan is the EFLA going to be? Because right now, it only has one kitchen.
It's going to be.
The first, the original footprint of the house, the first floor right, is the in-law apartment.
Okay.
The rest of the house in the second floor is the big, what we'll call the main body of the house.
That's, I don't, I don't have any other questions, thank you.
It was hard for us to, because, you know, it's hard to decide how we're going to move forward, but, you know, but having, having some, some health issues in my life. So, we, we're going to need some support, but we can help them too. We have one granddaughter, she's together. So, it's going to be, it's going to be a good, good extended family.
No, 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 I, that's wonderful. I just, when I was looking at the plans, I was saying, gee, there's only one kitchen, and it already started, so I was just trying to figure out the sequence.
We want everything in, going to.
That's fine, thank you.
You are.
Thank you, Corinne. Ken?
So, what is being shared? Is that the little common hallway that's going in, that is access?
They go upstairs, and definitely down on the other side, we stay in our, in our unit, in my, in my life. Looking ahead.
I have no other question.
Thank you, Ken. Jeff?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Ken? I have no questions, thank you. Thank you.
I guess it's R2, right? It's an undersized lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's 20, 20,000.
20, yeah.
It says, the deed says 24,993. That's my confusion.
It's a.
You want the deed?
All right, there's something, there's something not.
Okay.
This plan says 24.
The sign said 17.
This, R2 is 20,000, right?
Right, yeah. Says the block is under 10%.
It's a front.
A front.
Only 100.
110, 24,000.
Well, they have to have a front. 25.
125.
Fronting.
Front, yeah. Questions, Becky?
No questions.
Thank you, Bob.
That's the only one.
I have no question.
Thank you, and I'm just looking at the plan. I'm trying, I'm mostly missing, where is the second kitchen?
I think it's in the, the kitchen's on the second floor in the big house. The big house.
Okay, one bedroom is now, is going to be on the wall, or the stairs, going to be, that will be lights. You're in that, I'm going to be in the stairs for, like, downstairs.
So, where the ceiling is, the kitchen's in there? It's just not shown because we didn't get a board?
Well, he might have, I may have eliminated the kitchen so I could issue a permit. He might have gave you the wrong, said the drawers, but the, that's the only difference. It was a, it was a big kitchen up on the second floor on the left-hand side.
Okay, so.
It's a big, a big room.
So, if we approve this tonight, we're going to leave an updated draft? And show this kitchen?
We only need the EFLA, we're going to deal with.
You're really, you're really dealing with the argument.
All right, very good. I have no further questions. Any more questions on the board? I'll go to the audience. Anybody here on 21 Sherwood Ave? Hearing none, I'll come back. And Corinne, deliberations, please.
I don't vote for this project.
Thank you. Jeff, I'm sorry, Ken?
I would vote for this, too.
Jeff?
I will vote for it.
And, Ken?
I will vote for this.
Becky?
I will vote for it.
I'll vote for it.
And I too support this project. So, could I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the special permit according to Section 9.3.3.2 of the Danvers zoning bylaw for an extended family living area on a, well, it says undersized lot, as shown on the drawers. The municipal water and sewer shall not be overloaded. The public street shall not become overloaded by the EFLA. The value of other buildings and properties shall not be depreciated by the EFLA. The specific site is in appropriate location. The EFLA, the EFLA will not adversely affect the neighborhood. There will not be undue notions to vehicles on the testings inadequate in property. Somebody will provide and ensure the proper operation of the EFLA. The EFLA will be in harmony with the general purpose of the bylaw.
I've got a motion, can I get a second?
Sir?
I've got a second, but Ken, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck, see you in the building inspector, okay.
Thank you so much.
Good luck. Okay, Mr. Clerk, I think you go to the next case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next case is Jan and Frances Farrell, docket 20-4888, requesting a special permit for a kennel license to have four dogs total on premises in accordance with Section 6, Table 1 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 7 Putnam Lane. This is owned R3.
You must be?
Hey, Frances, right?
All right.
Good, hey.
Tell us what you'd like to do.
Well, we currently have two 10-year-old West Highland terriers, and we've always planned to have more dogs. We would really like to get two puppies now before our two West Highland terriers get too old and crabby to deal with puppies running around. And, and then, in the eventuality, that one of them is going to go, they will not be alone, and these pride animals, dogs, get us through the end of our days. And we would just, we just really want our West Highland terriers. The puppies are vicious, but lovable.
Who's this little guy?
That's just a picture of them, but that's what they look like.
So, yours doesn't look this cute?
No, they did. They did look that cute at one time.
I might look that cute at one time, too. Okay, so you're looking to have two additional dogs? And if coming here, you do realize we require kennel license because you've got more than two, I think, is the point.
They really are, yeah, I'm going to.
You have three. Okay, is that about it? Okay, Bob, we'll start down there with you.
Got two questions for you. Would you accept as a condition that the kennel license allows no more than four dogs? Of course. And that the license be limited, limited to you, the applicant, and no one else? So, if someone else moves into your house, okay? And I.
Anybody's moving in, they are removing a.
Yeah, and, please, I, I applied you for taking not one puppy, but two.
Well, they're very, they're very mentally cute dogs, and they need a constant back and forth.
I have a can't area, so I don't get talking about.
We only had one.
Yeah.
We got two because we both worked at the time.
Oh, all right.
And we had, I've got a 20 by 30, six-foot fence in the backyard to protect them. And they come and go as they please through dog doors all day long. I mean, they just.
I have a little.
Thank you, Bob. Becky?
And you just said that you're not planning to breed any dogs, right? Okay, no questions.
Thank you, and Ken?
Thank you. I just have a question for the building inspector. How does a kennel license work? Is there like expiration on it? Does it go with just the?
Runs with the property.
Runs with the property, so the next owners could potentially have the kennel license as well?
Yeah, in this case, in this case, it's four dogs.
Oh, I didn't know.
In this case, it's four dogs.
Right.
I mean, if you look at that kennel provision, especially the zoning bylaw, 646, so the DMC Animal Hospital, that's there by that same regulation? I believe the Bay Area Animal Clinic is there by that same kennel?
Okay.
Regulation, a special permit, so it's kind of interesting that it's what it has done, or what's there by that kennel.
So, you're okay with that? Okay. No further questions. Thank you, Ken. Jeff?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
And Ken?
I have no questions.
And Corinne?
I have no questions, I, I would do.
I have no questions, I, we did.
Thank you, and so just to clarify, you'd be willing to take the condition that there be no more than four dogs, and that this special permit will only go with you, the applicant? We will not pass this on with the property?
Correct.
Very good. No other questions from the board? I'll go out to the public, anybody here to comment on 7 Putnam Lane? Hearing none, I will come back. I believe I started with you, Paul.
I'll vote for this with those two conditions.
Thank you, Becky?
I'll vote for this.
I will vote for this.
I will vote for this with the conditions.
And Ken?
I would vote for this with the conditions as well.
And Corinne?
I would vote for this with those conditions as well.
And I too support this as long as the conditions are met. So could I get a motion?
I move to create the special permit in accordance with Section 6, Table 1, Section 30.2.1 of the DMS zoning bylaw for a kennel, maximum four dogs. The municipal water and sewer shall not be overloaded by the kennel use. The public street shall not be overloaded by the kennel use. The value of other buildings and properties shall not be depreciated by the kennel use. The specific site is in appropriate location, but is used, the kennel use will not adversely affect the neighborhood. There will not be undue nuisance to vehicles, pedestrians, inadequate property facilities will be provided to ensure the proper operation. The kennel use, the proposed kennel use will be in harmony with the general purposes of the bylaw, and this kennel will be designated only for the applicant and no one else.
I've got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck?
Thank you very much.
See you in the building, thank you. Okay. Mr. Clark, please.
Our next case is Todd Wilson, docket 20-4889, requesting a special permit to create an extended family living area on a non-conforming lot that is undersized. The EFL will comply with all requirements in accordance with Section 9.3.2 of the DMS zoning bylaws at 2 Brown Road, this is zone R3.
Hello?
Hi. Mr. Wilson, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and just before you sat down, so, did you attach a narrative that I just didn't get, or did you not?
I did not do a narrative.
Okay, all right, so tell us what you like, clearly we're on a headline here, so tell us what you like to do.
So basically, I recently took over ownership of my parents' home. They need to downsize, they're getting old, so looking to move my family into that property, do a little addition, and just basically stay there for the rest of my life.
Okay, so this is going to be with the folks in this building and the EFL?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're a little bit at a disadvantage, because you didn't give us that much detail as far as, oh, well, I guess it is in your drawing, so it is at 750 square feet?
Yes.
That's the size, okay. All right, is that it?
Yes.
Okay, Corinne, I think you're...
I'm just, I went out to look at your property. I'm just trying to visualize where in the house, based on these drawings, where exactly is the EFL going to be?
So the front door, basically, right that part, so when you walk in to the left, they'll be able to keep their same living room. There's the kitchen right there, and then off to the right would be their full bath, and then to the right of that, their bedroom.
Okay.
I think it's shaded in...
It is, I see exactly where it is, I'm just, I'm just trying...
Yeah, so if you're looking at the house from the, from the street, it's basically like right in the middle.
Okay. Okay. So are you taking square footage that's in the house, case in bermite, or are you expanding the size?
I'll be taking some of the square footage already in the home, and extending more for my family.
Okay.
Yeah, the addition on the back, over the pool.
Okay. No other questions?
Yep, Ken?
So you're going to, is there another back door, or that, is it a door right behind the garage, right?
Yeah, on the left side of the building.
So do you have a back door off of your addition on the back?
On like the third back here?
Yeah.
No. Yeah, I think there's a sliding door? Okay, yeah, so on the existing, there'll be a sliding door?
Which is lying on a...
It's on the existing structure.
Oh.
Yeah. I didn't, I guess I was maybe misunderstanding your question.
So, oh, so is it on the side, like, a side outside of the garage?
Side of the house, like, garage, yes, there is, there is an access to it.
So this is lying...
That's on, that's on the existing sunroom that's there?
Okay.
Ken, can we tie up your name, please?
My name is Franco Curlo.
Are you the builder?
Yes.
Did you say, you guys have any, Kevin? Okay, thank you. All right, go ahead, Ken. We're asking, we have sliders.
Yeah, so is it off at a sitting room?
If you're looking at plans, yeah, the kitchen, slider is...
Existing?
Existing slider. This is the difference on the left side. When you're looking at the garage, the new entrance is just beyond that bathroom, above the top, or at the bottom, bottom left of the plan.
Okay.
Just beyond the garage on the left-hand side.
So that's a common area, like, is it here?
No.
Kitchen?
Yeah.
I'm John Seppner, an architectural architect. Essentially, what we've done is we've plucked out the core of the existing house so that the parents can stay in their living, about their kitchen, bathroom, and one bedroom, which is all they need. And then we've attached to the back of the house an addition that houses a master bedroom and, I guess we've updated, we'll be adding, adding a total of three bedrooms in the back in the same footprint that you have. There's changes were made, which I don't think is germane to this hearing, to the layout, because the footprint will remain the same, and the EFL will remain the same. There's a shared computer room, which will be, I guess it's a slightly computer room there. So we'll have, essentially, taking over an existing family room, and where you see kitchen on there, that's an existing sunroom. We're going to be closing that in a little bit, so it's a little more energy efficient. And then we have a corridor running around a courtyard, which is an existing patio now with a pool. The pool will be filled in, because people won't use it anymore. And other than the slightly small size of the lot in that district, I think that's the reason we're here, is because of the undersized lot. Any other questions?
No, I was just wondering if, because we don't, is that true? We don't want like an extra, like, door, so, like, in the back, so it can be used as an apartment going forward?
I think it was just a matter of convenience.
Yeah.
In case the on-hand guests come in, they'll have to, we have all the...
Ken, the bylaw is that we didn't want, the bylaw didn't want extra doors in the front, they didn't want...
Two front doors.
But we, but the street, okay, what really happens around the rest of the building? I don't think it was, the bylaw, I really didn't care, it was really, what does that look like from the street? Does it look like a duplex that we want? But that's the thing, is you can't have two entry doors in front, that's what they did. Okay, all right, thanks. I'm all good.
Thank you, Jeff?
I just have a question about, for the architect, and the owner. Why did you decide to put a courtyard there instead of capturing that first-floor space?
Well, I think it's a matter of the size and arrangement of the spaces. There would be no sunlight coming into that back corner at all.
Yeah.
And this, my work generally focuses around daylighting, and it's a nice convenient way to get it in. Plus, there's a very private space there that's been created, that will...
I think it looked very cool, the pool that's in, we think.
Perhaps for you.
I have no further questions.
Thank you, Ken?
I have no questions.
Becky?
I have no questions.
I have no questions.
My question is, so, I'm not seeing the slider, I'm not seeing, so is there any egress out of the rear of the building or what you're guys, what you're calling the addition, the new addition?
There's a missing slider on the, on the plan.
And where would that be?
That is in the back, it was not called the kitchen. It's like the...
Back of the kitchen, yeah. So I see two windows...
I got the two windows, but I just...
In between the two windows, okay. Okay, and you said this, just to clarify, the shared area is considered as computer room?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, so there's a small...
Yeah, I see it to the right, so the rear of the, Mr. Wilson's side of the building, he would be entering on the left side behind the garage, the parents in the front, and this core of the building is going to be the EFL.
Just to be perfectly clear, too, there is a small shared area between the garage and the sitting room and the garage, and what will be the living room. So that there's access to the garage from within the house, in both ends.
I do see that, okay.
I guess that has...
And a laundry room there as well?
That has the laundry room as well.
Very good. Okay, I have no further questions. Anybody else on the board? And anybody in the audience here to speak on 2 Brown Road? Hearing none, I'll come back to the board, Corinne, deliberations, please.
I would vote for this.
Thank you, Ken?
I would vote for this, just...
And Jeff?
I would vote for this.
And Ken?
I would vote for this.
Becky?
I would vote for this, I went out there, it's a unique little location.
I love it.
I love it, it's great, yeah.
I love it, I'm so excited for that.
Yeah, very nice, yeah.
Thank you.
I would vote for it.
Paul?
I also will vote for it.
Yeah, I did say because of myself. You know, you were buddying to Beverly at work, I'm sure it's not great. And if you want to make your oasis, it works for me, so could I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to create the special permit in accordance with Section 9.3.3.2 of the DMS zoning bylaws for an extended family living area on an undersized lot, as shown on the drawings. The municipal water and sewer shall not be overloaded by the EFL, the public street shall not be overloaded by the EFL, the value of other buildings and properties shall not be depreciated by the EFL. The specific site is in appropriate location for the EFL. The EFL will not adversely affect the neighborhood. There will not be undue nuisance to vehicles, pedestrians, inadequate property facilities will be provided to ensure the proper operation of the proposed EFL. The proposed EFL will be in harmony with the general purposes of the bylaw.
Second.
I got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck, see you in the building, sir.
Talk to the building inspector.
Corinne, you had a question, just only went probably on Brown Road.
Most, most people in town couldn't find you.
Okay, Mr. Clark, our final case.
Paul, good news on this one, this is a finding, you won't have to read it.
I know.
Our final case is Michael Petano, docket 20-4890, requesting a finding to raise a roof to make more room on existing second floor in accordance with Section 3.11.1A and B of the DMS zoning bylaws at 2 Donaghy Lane, this is zone R2.
Hi. Good evening.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Identify yourself and tell us what you'd like to do.
Michael Petano, 2 Donaghy Lane. So we're looking to raise the roof, I guess you'd say. Came to make it a colonial. Earlier this summer, we had a fire.
Yeah, I heard that, and I saw the burn marks up the side, oh, what happened there?
So it was, I think we had a live wire in the attic space, we don't have access to. So, you know, with it being heavily damaged, we have two young kids. We'd like to expand the space upstairs to have three full bedrooms, so it all can be upstairs. A new wire. A new wire. So we'd like to utilize that space to expand, expand out, and make it our forever home.
And I see you, so, yeah, I kind of remembered it. So you had come in for a deck, if I remember right?
Yep, two years ago.
Was the deck saved?
Yeah.
Oh, so we've got that going, okay. All right, is that about it? You're just looking to do a second floor, it looks like, right?
Yep.
And you're staying within the same footprint of the building, correct? Okay, Paul?
Okay, just going to square up the top, stay in the same footprint I have building for you.
Thank you, Becky?
No questions.
And Ken?
I get what he's trying to do, I have no questions.
Jeff?
I have no questions.
Ken?
So, the deck's already there, it says proposed deck, or is this an old drawing?
That's an old drawing, no, you already have the deck.
Yeah.
And the deck didn't get melted in the fire?
Sorry.
Corinne?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, and I don't either, Mr. Petano, I think it's pretty straightforward what we're trying to do. Anybody here from the public to speak on 2 Donaghy Lane?
Hearing none.
Okay, we'll come back to the board for deliberations, and Paul, I just had a few...
I'll vote for this.
Thank you, Becky?
Yeah, it's a unique lot, it's difficult, so you really have to go up, there's nowhere to go out, so I would vote for this.
Ken, this is a good comeback for the buyer, so I'll vote for this. Yes, Jeff?
I would vote for this.
And Ken?
I would vote for this.
And Corinne?
I would vote for this.
And I too, vote for this, I'm glad you didn't lose much of the house, and it's good, I mean, making life better, right? So, thank you. Could I get a motion, please, and this is a...
Mr. Chairman, I move to create the finding in accordance with Section 3.11A and B of the DMS zoning bylaw to raise the roof to make more room on the existing second floor. The proposed addition increases the nonconformity.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
The proposed addition is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists.
Second, I got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?